This meeting of the Rolling Meadows City Council is hereby called to order. Would everyone please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The clerk will please call the roll.
Cannon.
Here.
Prina.
Here.
Majikis.
Here.
Judd.
Here.
Baner.
Here.
Diastis.
Here.
Bean Boss.
Present.
Seven present and none absent. There is a quorum present this evening. Therefore, members of the audience are reminded that these proceedings are being videotaped for current and future broadcast over the city's cable television channel. The first item on the agenda this evening is a motion to approve the minutes at the April 14th council meeting. Is there such a motion? Mr. Baner has made the motion, and it has been seconded. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections? Seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The ayes have it, and the minutes are approved. Under the reports for this evening, under the mayor's reports, I don't have the usual mayor's report that we have when it's appointment night, because everybody on the list this evening is a reappointment, and so there aren't any new faces. They're all folks who are already serving. So that leads me to tonight's mayor report. For some of the openings that we have for things like plan commission, zoning board, and such, there are single openings that can use filling. And it was probably a couple of years ago now that my column in the newsletter for the city had asked folks, number one, if they were interested, but more importantly, if you know somebody who's interested. People who know somebody who should be interested, you think they would be good. They might not volunteer on their own, but perhaps when a little birdie whispers to their alderman, perhaps when a little birdie whispers to the mayor, and a call comes out of nowhere that says, hey, I was talking to somebody who mentioned you might be a good person, that can be a great way to get people who might not otherwise volunteer. And so we can fill these things, but new blood is always appreciated. And so if anybody would like to submit their own name, or even better, submit the name of somebody that they think would do well and may not volunteer themselves, we'd be very happy to receive that information. That's the mayor's report for this evening. Are there ward reports? Mr. Prina, the second ward.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. It's spring, and it's very active in the second ward. We have some construction going on in Adam Street between Wilson and Vermont, and we've had some times that it's been kind of challenging with the construction, but Fred and his boys have done a good job. We're also working on some issues on Theta Lane, and also on Gettysburg with some of the tree removals, so I just want to report and let the folks know that we're working on them, and we're coordinating with the various departments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Further ward reports this evening? Seeing none, the council meeting is now open to members of the audience for 20 minutes to address the city council on matters that are on the agenda or regarding other issues. We ask that persons wishing to address the city council keep their comments to five minutes in length. Comments must be addressed to the council as a whole through the mayor, and profanity may not be used in any form. There is one person on the sign-in sheet this evening, Mr. TJ Singer, who has asked to put his name in for item, I believe, B on tonight's agenda. Mr. Singer, the microphone is yours, sir.
Yes. My name is TJ Singer. I am the CEO of Nature's Care Company. We are hoping to open the medicinal marijuana dispensary at 975 Rolling, September-October. And I just wanted to introduce ourselves, and we have Terry Lady, who is here with Remax, found us various properties, and is a real estate specialist. Susan Frankovic, she will be one of the managers in charge of the dispensary. And Brian Bessie will also be one of the officers of Nature's Care. So we're here to answer any questions you might have as you go through and consider our presentation and proposal.
Thank you for taking the time to be here tonight, sir. As Mr. Singer was the only person on the sign-in sheet, that will conclude the public comment portion of this evening's meeting, and the council can proceed to its items of business, starting with one ordinance that is in for second reading. It is item A. This ordinance, if adopted, would amend the staffing plan to change a position in the Community Development Department. Specifically, the position listed as Chief Building Officer and Assistant Community Development Director would revert to its previous title, Plan Review and Inspection Supervisor. Accordingly, the position will be reclassified from its current P1 level on the pay scale to revert back to its previous level of P2. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Some of it, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Diastis has made the motion, and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? The clerk will please call the roll.
Prina.
Yes.
Majikis.
Yes.
Judd.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Bean Boss.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Seven in favor and none opposed. This ordinance is hereby declared passed. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda for ordinances. However, the chair is going to take the liberty of removing item C, and therefore there is no consent agenda. So each of the items will be taken in turn. Item B. This ordinance, if adopted, would grant a special use to allow the operation of a medical marijuana dispensary facility at 975 Rolling Road. This site was previously approved for this use by the council, but the vendor who proposed the site was not chosen for the license assigned to our district. Nature's Care was assigned the district's license, but the Palatine Village Board turned down their proposal in that town. The Plan Commission has considered this request and has recommended its approval. Is there a motion to move this ordinance forward for second reading? Mr. Baner has made the motion, and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the clerk move this ordinance forward for second reading? The clerk will please call the roll.
Majikis.
Yes.
Judd.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Bean Boss.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Prina.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the clerk will please move this item forward for second reading. The next item on the agenda is item C. This ordinance, if adopted, would amend the code of ordinances to add the possession of less than 30 grams of marijuana to the list of offenses that will be assigned to the city's adjudication process. The fine for the first offense would be $250, and the fine for subsequent offenses would be $500. Collected fines would first and primarily be assigned to paying for the various procedures that will be required under this ordinance. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution? Mr. Cannon has made the motion, and it has been seconded. Under discussion, the chair would take the liberty of starting discussion, because I'm quite unhappy and quite annoyed to say that we're going to be asking to waive the first reading. And having said that, I want to make it clear that my unhappiness and my annoyance is not in any way, shape, or form connected to the chief, who has requested this. It is with the Cook County State's Attorney's Office that had the disgraceful lack of professional courtesy to give advance warning to any municipality in Cook County of the step that they were going to take a week ago Monday to no longer prosecute the offenses that are listed under this ordinance. I don't really have an issue with what the State's Attorney's Office wants to do. They're entitled to prosecute what they want to prosecute, and entitled not to prosecute what they don't want to prosecute. But when you have police departments all over this county who by this action have been left in a legal limbo of, so what the heck do you do now? Well, this ordinance is meant to make that legal limbo go away. And so what I consider to be reckless disregard for all of the subentities of Cook County, they just made their announcements and threw it out there for all of us to have to deal with. I think anybody who's been on this council for a while knows that I hate waiving first reading. In the entire time of eight years that I was an alderman, I only voted for it twice and voted against it every other time. The two other times were times that we were backed into a corner, once by another agency and once by ourselves. And as a matter of fact, it wasn't that long ago that folks from Nature's Care were sitting in my office, and I told them, we don't do that here in this town. And now the night they're here, we're stuck with the embarrassment, thanks to the State's Attorney's Office, of either going back on what we try not to do, or leaving our police stuck in a legal limbo for at least two weeks longer, if not more. So I think that the action that they took is certainly an action that's their prerogative, but to do so without any advance notice to any municipality in the county is reprehensible. And so it is for that reason only that I would actually take the unusual step of personally supporting waiving first reading. If we waive first reading, and if the ordinance passes tonight, I feel honor-bound to put on the agenda, two weeks from tonight, a motion to rescind this ordinance. I want it to be very clear, I have no intention of rescinding the ordinance. I think the ordinance is a good idea, and it's something that we should do. But the entire purpose for why we don't waive a first reading is because the people of this community have a right to find out about what's going on with our ordinances with a two-week delay, where they can contact their alderman, they can contact me, they can contact the city staff, and express any concerns that they might have. So sort of, kind of, in a sense, the purpose of a second reading is to be able to contact your city officials in time to be able to get your voice heard before a second debate that contains the potential of killing the ordinance. Now, of course, in that case, you kill it before it's passed. In this case, I can't offer that to the citizens of Rolling Meadows. But I can offer a second debate that could seriously carry the potential of repealing the ordinance if folks somehow or another think this is a bad idea. So since we don't do this usually in this town, I feel honor-bound to use that small parliamentary maneuver that admittedly is a bit confusing, but at least that way we can stand on principle, even if the Cook County State's Attorney's Office won't. I hope those thoughts are clear. Is there further discussion on the ordinance? Then seeing none, the question is, shall the clerk, excuse me, can the chair have a motion to waive the first reading of this ordinance?
Some of it, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Diastis has made the motion, and Mr. Baner has seconded. Is there any discussion on waiving the first reading of the ordinance? Seeing none, those in favor of waiving the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. I thank the council for its consideration in approving the motion to waive the first reading. Therefore, the question now is, shall the clerk move this item forward for se-- excuse me, shall the ordinance be adopted? I'm so not used to saying that on first reading, I can't even get it out of my mouth without having the usual. Mr. Diastis has made the motion. Is there a second? It has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Then the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? The clerk will please call the roll.
Judd.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Bean Boss.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Prina.
Yes.
Majikis.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is hereby declared passed this evening. Chief, we sincerely hope that helps, because that's the only doggone reason we're doing this. That concludes all of the ordinances that are on tonight's agenda, bringing us next to the warrant, which is item D. It's the document that releases all the funds for the obligations of the city incurred from April 8th through the 21st. The amount for approval is nearly $1.2 million, roughly half of which is related to the payroll. Is there a motion to approve the warrant as prepared by the Finance Department? Mrs. Majikis has made the motion, and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Mr. Cannon.
Mr. Mayor, I know I'm not going to follow protocol properly here, but I was wondering if I could ask a question about one of the items on here?
You may always ask a question, yes, sir.
I apologize, I missed this when I read it the other day, and I just picked it up about an hour ago. On page four of the warrants, under Arrow Road Construction, I just was wondering if Fred could explain why we're paying for the streets before we even start the program?
All right, then if you would just offer me one second, page--
First item on page four. Warrant, page four. Let's see, electronic page 109, I'm sorry.
109, thank you, sir.
I apologize.
So then, Mr. Cannon, your question would be about--
Arrow Road Construction.
--that first item, okay. The item that's registered as--
58-6.
58-6, thank you. Mr. Vogt.
Thank you, Mayor. The Arrow Road Construction payment of $58,000 is a progress payment from the 2014 street program, primarily for Central Road by the high school.
So it's a hangover from last year, not an advanced payment for this year?
Correct.
Mr. Cannon, is that--
Thank you, thanks.
Fair enough. Further questions on the warrant? Then seeing none, the question is, shall the warrant be approved? The clerk will please call the roll.
Baner.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Bean Boss.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Prina.
Yes.
Majikis.
Yes.
Judd.
Yes.
Seven in favor and none opposed, the warrant is approved. That brings the council to the consent agenda for resolutions. There are eight resolutions on tonight's consent agenda. They are items E through L. Would any alderman like any of those items removed from the consent agenda? Mr. Judd.
H.
Item H is removed from the consent agenda? Mr. Cannon.
Aye.
Item I is removed from the consent agenda? Are there any further items to be removed from the consent agenda? Then seeing none, the chair will ask unanimous consents to consider six resolutions, E, F, G, J, K, and L, as one motion. Is there any objection to doing so? Hearing none, it would now be in order to make a motion to approve all six resolutions. Is there such a motion?
Some of it, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bean Boss has made the motion, Mr. Diastis has seconded. The question then, therefore, is, shall these six resolutions pass? Item E would reject the bids for the Central Road Sanitary Sewer Project. Item F would approve a $30,000 contribution to the village of Palatine for the new dive van being purchased in conjunction with the city sharing with that department and the Palatine Rural Fire Department. Item G would adopt the 2015 zoning map. Item J would award a contract for roof repairs at Pump Station 2. Item K would approve an agreement with IDOT for funding for the Newport Drive Reconstruction Project. And item L would award a contract for pavement paint striping. Therefore, again, the question is, shall all six resolutions be adopted? The clerk will please call the roll.
Diastis.
Yes.
Bean Boss.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Prina.
Yes.
Majikis.
Yes.
Judd.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, all six of those resolutions are adopted. That brings the council to item H. This resolution, if adopted, would approve a contract with the best-named fireworks company on the whole dang planet, Mad Bomber Fireworks of Kingsbury, Indiana, to provide the city's annual 4th of July fireworks show. The amount of the contract is $20,000 to be paid from the general fund. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution? Mr. Prina has made the motion, and it has been seconded. Mr. Judd, you ask that this item be pulled from the consent agenda. Sir, you're entitled to first comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just reading this, it says that we're going to basically have the same show as we did last year, and based on the things that are occurring this year, because it's the 60th anniversary, and it's been deemed to be substantially more important year than '59 or '61. I'm actually going to do something I haven't done in six years on the chair, and it'll probably shock everybody, but I'd like to make an amendment to actually increase the amount that we're going to spend from $20,000 to $25,000.
Is that a Asma machine?
Yeah, this is changing the room here, too. So I'd like, you know, I'd like for the city manager to have the ability to, you know, come up with an extra $5,000 from somewhere in the budget, wherever he deems appropriate to, so that we can have a little bit better show than we normally do, just in the sense that it's the 60th anniversary. So my proposal is to raise it to 25, but I'm not worried about the wording, just allow the manager to get it wherever he can find it.
Then is there a second to the motion? There is a second to the motion to strike the number 20,000 and insert the number 25,000. Might the chair ask by simply asking for unanimous consent? Is there any objection to amending the resolution accordingly? Didn't think there would be. Therefore, the resolution now stands as amended. The dollar amount is raised $5,000 to $25,000, and that consideration is appreciated. Mr. Judd, is there further discussion on this resolution? Seeing none, the question is, shall the resolution be adopted? The clerk will please call the roll.
Bean Boss.
Yes.
Cannon.
I think so.
Prina.
Um, yes. I'm agreeing, yes.
Majikis.
Yes.
Judd.
Still catching my breath.
Baner.
Yes.
Yes.
Happy to be the seventh unanimous vote.
Then with four votes in favor and three rather startled votes, including the maker of the motion, that's a total of seven in favor, and the resolution is adopted. That brings the council to item I. This resolution, if adopted, would approve a contract with Christopher B. Burke Engineering of Rosemont, Illinois, to provide the engineering services for this year's street program. Last year, when the 2014 budget results were still unknown, the city approved the street program, and once the city became aware that the 2014 budget would have sufficient, would have a sufficient surplus, an expanded road program was approved. The larger scope adds an additional $20,000 to the engineering portion of this program. Is there, therefore, a motion to adopt this resolution? Mr. Baner has made the motion, and it has been seconded. Mr. Cannon, you ask that this item be polled, you're entitled to first comment, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I direct these comments to Fred. Last fall, we approved you doing some preliminary engineering on streets also. Combined with that cost and this cost, obviously, our percent of 10% that we've been normally approving for yearly maintenance is going to get kind of pushed out of whack. I guess the first question I would like to ask, is that something that we should plan on for the future? Is it always until we get all these really crazy, bad roads done? Mr. Vogt, the ones that are out west mostly?
Thank you, Mayor. That is a good way to view it and to state it, particularly when dealing with road reconstructions and partial reconstructions. Most years, in the recent past, we've done what we call mill and overlay, where we just take the surface asphalt off, do some patching, drainage structures, some sidewalk, and then put new asphalt down. The streets in the 2015 proposed program are two reconstructions, one of which is an experimental process approved recently by IDOT, and the third being Benton Street is a partial reconstruction. So there is significantly more involved with that when we talk about costing out the city engineers' time in terms of the inspections required, the testing required. There's also some traffic control challenges on two of those three streets this year, so to us, all of that adds up to why the costs are at a higher percent this year than other years when it's typically resurfacing.
So going forward with these roads that are already in bad shape, that we know we have to take the base out and everything, so what percentage number should you think we assign to that for future streets?
Well, per street, we should probably look at anywhere from 1% to 4%. You are correct earlier in talking about 10%, that that's typically what we looked at for resurfacing, but as you can see here and working with the engineer, the additional efforts that are needed could add anywhere from 1% to 4% for that. So we'll have to figure that in moving forward with our cost estimates for future street reconstructions.
Because is it safe to assume that next fall, you're going to want to pre-engineer streets for next year?
That is the preferred method, so that we get the information during the winter and can get the contracts ready.
Okay. Couple other questions. You know, two years ago, we had a kind of lengthy conversation, and I thought we were going to make a major effort to try to marry our street program to one of our neighbors. We talked about Palatine as a good chance, maybe Arlington, maybe Schaumburg, I don't know. Have we ever got down the road with that?
We've discussed that with a few of our neighboring communities. The difficulties are using MFT monies from the state, getting approvals, and the timing of it, we still aren't at a point where we can be ready when they are to put their contracts out. If we can accelerate our process, and one of the things that is definitely important is getting as much work done in the fall to assess that, and to secure what the budget will be, and the price estimates that would help us to work with some of our neighbors, either in part or in whole. We did do DuPont this year, which was a collaborative effort with the village of Palatine, but that's just a small street. But the answer is yes, we can keep working on it, but we've got to be ready when they're ready, and Palatine puts theirs out to bid in February.
Yeah, no, they're just finishing, theirs already out in my area. So one of the questions I guess would ask along with that is, a year ago, we had the conversation that if we, you know, when you came to us and requested early engineering, you know, in the fall, that it would really give you the opportunity to bid early, but yet we don't even have the bid back yet, and Palatine's finishing their roads already. So I'm a little bit lost as to why we're so far behind relative to doing the things that we thought you asked us to do.
Because of the reconstruction nature of the streets, as opposed to resurfacing.
But isn't, why does that take so much extra to get the bids back for?
It's not getting the bids, it's designing the streets and getting the design methods approved through IDOT for starters. It's just a lot more field work to analyze the core samples, to determine what is the best way to reconstruct the streets. As I had mentioned earlier, an experimental method that our engineers got approved by IDOT for the Fairfax Village is hopefully going to save us a goodly amount of money by not hauling out the materials. So I look at that as a positive, but it does take time to go through that, design it, and get the necessary approvals.
Okay. Last point, I guess last year, I thought we had a relatively lengthy discussion also about the possibility of bringing an intern in to help with inspections and stuff to try to keep costs down. Has that ever got off square one?
We looked at it. To bring someone in, and what we consider an intern salary probably is more training than is needed, or that can justify that. There are some other things that staff is looking at that we may report to you in the future with regards to personnel to try to augment the engineers' costs, but not anything I want to go into at the moment.
Okay. I guess the last thought I would have is, if there's anything, I guess I would ask you to be as aggressive as you can going forward to try to get cost savings wherever we can. I mean, obviously, we know we're already behind the eight ball getting these streets redone, so anything you can do to help that situation would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Mr. Crumstock.
Just want to clarify two points. Obviously, we've talked to Palatine a lot, but we've also talked to Schaumburg and Arlington Heights in a smaller sense, so all three municipalities, not just that we've mentioned Palatine tonight. So again, we are working on some of those kind of things, and staff to staff, we've communicated, so we are getting closer. The other problem, as Mr. Vogt has mentioned, where we use a lot of MFT, they're using a lot of other money, and that becomes interesting waters as we continue working with our neighbors.
Mr. Cannon, is that sufficient?
That's great, thank you very much.
Further discussion of the resolution? Then seeing none, the question is, shall the resolution be adopted? The clerk will please call the roll.
Cannon.
Yes.
Prina.
Yes.
Majikis.
Yes.
Judd.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Bean Boss.
Yes.
Seven in favor and none opposed, this resolution is adopted. That concludes all the items that are in for resolutions this evening. Under Other Business and Reports, tonight is Appointment Palooza, as we usually do in April at one of the two meetings. As all of the people on the list this evening are reappointments, I don't feel a need to go down the list, it's rather lengthy, to name each and every individual being reappointed, but I do feel the need to point out that under the Plan Commission, Mr. Gary Powell does not intend to serve out a full term. It is his intention to take leave of the Plan Commission. However, he's been deciding about that, he and I have been talking about it, and it looked like it was going to be too late to get anybody into that chair, and there is a meeting in May. So I'm keeping Gary Powell's name on the list for reappointments, and then as soon as we find somebody who can take the vacancy, it is Mr. Powell's intention to resign his seat, which he has held since 1999, and to turn it over to somebody who's new. new. That being the only comment I have on the list, um, is there any discussion of the list of appointments this evening? Then seeing none, the chair asks for a motion to approve these reappointments to various boards and commissions. Mr. Banger has made the motion and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall all of these individuals be reappointed to their respective boards and commissions? The clerk will please call the roll.
Prina?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Judd?
Yes.
Banger?
Yes.
Deastis?
Yes.
Beanboss?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Seven in favor and none opposed, these individuals are reappointed to their various boards and commissions. There are no proclamations this evening, therefore, does the city clerk have a report?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Then we go to the city staff reports, starting with Mr. Crumstock and the community items of interest.
Just like we had, uh, Appointment Palooza, we do have, uh, items that, uh, to mention and as you all know, April, May become very long because of different events that we actually have coming up. But the first one that we actually have is just the friendly reminder that yard waste collection has started and also the street sweeper has been around throughout the city. If you have any questions about yard waste, what's acceptable, how you leave it out to the corner, how you deal with, uh, bush, branches, any of those kind of things, please contact Public Works at 847-963-0500 or visit the website, the current website, uh, at citrm.org-publicworks. Coming up on May 15th, and again, that was right after our next meeting on May 12th, um, we do want to mention that the sprinkler ban does start. So please conserve water, um, throughout the community. Lawn sprinkling is prohibited from noon to 6:00 PM daily. And again, that does start by ordinance on May 15th. So when people are saying, why are we starting it on such a strange weekday? That's what happened. It's always on May 15th. Then the next few events that we'll mention again at the May 12th meeting, um, are all on the same day. On Saturday, May 16th, from 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM, the fire department, the chief and his group will be, um, doing the pancake breakfast. And then again, that will be through the Golden Years Council and that will be at the Park Central, 3000 Central Road. The cost of the tickets, if you do advanced tickets, is $5 for adults, four for children under 12. If you're doing a walk-in, then it's $6 an adult or $5 for a child under 12 years old. From the pancake breakfast, you can walk over starting at 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. The Garden Club's hometown plant and craft sale, that's craft, and someone mentioned it sounded something different last time, sorry. It's Saturday, May 16th, from 9:00 to 2:00 PM, and that's at the Public Works Building located at 3200 Central Road. When you're walking from Park Central to the Public Works Building, you can stop at the Historical Museum. And they're also doing the same time, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, um, also still on that Saturday. And they will have an open house and some other things that are going on. And then starting on Friday, May 22nd, the Meadows Cruise Nights are back and that's again, thanks to Meadows Christian Fellowship, 2401 Kirchhoff Road. And again, that cruise night on Friday nights goes from 6:00 to about 9:00 PM on Fridays and will go all the way through September. Then we also have on Saturday, May 23rd, our first Farmers and Food Truck Event that here at City Hall. That's from 10:00 to 2:00 PM. And again, the additional dates on Saturdays are going to be June 27th, July 25th, August 22nd, and September 26th. But new for this year, we actually have the Friday event of evening on June 19th. And actually, June 19th, we're also going to do a block party with police vehicles and some other stuff. But June 19th, from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM, at Community Church Parking Lot, we'll have a Farmers and Food Mark event going on. And that's 2720 Kirchhoff Road. Then on May 23rd, also when the Farmers and Food Mark is going on, we will have our traditional Memorial Day Parade and Ceremony. The parade starts at 11:00 AM and Kirchhoff Road, and then we'll be at the Carolin at 11:30. On May 30th, the Historical Museum, again, located at 3100 Central Road, will be conducting a garage sale. This will be starting at 9:00 AM. Also on May 30th, that will be the next 60th anniversary event that they have, an ice cream social at the Community Center Playground, that's 3705 Pheasant Drive. It's from noon to 1:00 PM. And then obviously, this is one of the off-production months when we do only electronic news interviews, so the elec, April electronic news is out on our website. And then because this is the last meeting of the month, we do want to make the future topics known for other committees coming up. The Economic Development Committee and the Zoning Board will not be meeting in May. However, the Plan Commission will be meeting on Tuesday, May 5th at 7:30 PM. Tentatively, there are three items that they will have public hearings and they consist of a sign appeal for the property located at 3245 Kirchhoff Road. The petitioner is Bill Otolo from Lexington Homes. The second item going to be discussed is an amendment to the, um, expand Illinois Route 53 Expressway Sign Overlay District, um, for the property located at 1835 1951 Rowling Road to allow the construction of an off-site advertising sign. The petitioner is Dave Williams of Digital Green Signs LLC. The third item for that night is an amendment to the Gould Plan Development Variations to allow site and building modifications on the property located at 2050 Gulf Road. The petitioner is Carl Richardson of Arthur J. Gallagher. The one item that I do want to mention that was an item of interest is just thanking, um, Spice Grill on New Wilkie Road for their ribbon cutting that they actually did. They are open for the last few months. They just did finally a ribbon cutting and it was a nice event. With that, those are items of interest.
Then the next item under staff reports would be the new business list for March. Mr. Crumstock?
There's only four that we actually have on the March list. What I would mention is one of the four, Yumakom Japanese at 1673 Algonquin Road. They're really in their process of doing the construction. That was the old Musclemakers. So they did come in for their new business license and that's why they do make it as a new business, but they're not open at this point in time.
Then the next item is, uh, the Staff Traffic Advisory Report. Mr. Vote?
Thank you, Mayor. The April meeting, a couple of things to highlight here, and most of these are involving school zones or bike paths, it seems. Number one, we've got the, uh, plans in, plans approved for the proposed bus lane to the rear of Rowley Meadows High School out to Oak Lane. The school district informs us that construction could start within the next few weeks near the ending of the school year. Industrial Avenue, uh, we had a request to examine it for a bike path. The city engineer did provide us a, um, design that, uh, does work in terms of, uh, developing lanes and signage there. We'll also be talking to Palatine about how to connect it, uh, at the intersection of Hickson and Industrial Illinois Avenue. Arbor Drive Curve, this is the one immediately south of their, um, offices, uh, some accidents have occurred there. We will be installing, uh, what we call Chevron signage to try to, um, better mark that, uh, that layout of the street there. If that doesn't work, the next step will probably be to consider a guardrail, but, uh, we'll do signage at this time and monitor it. Linden and Central Intersection School Crossing, uh, police department has asked us to, um, install signs there. We will work with them and, uh, review this again for a final, um, action at the May Traffic Review Meeting. Uh, just an update, the, um, Central Road Corridor in terms of new signage, uh, for what hasn't already been put in, should be completed, um, in the next week or so. We will then move over to Meadow Drive north of Kirchhoff for Kimball Hill School to upgrade those signs and, uh, we'll be continuing on a school-by-school basis throughout the summer to, um, get signage reviewed and, uh, approved so everything can be up to, um, current highway standards. Lastly, uh, we had a request from Arlington Heights with regards to the bike path corridor for New Wilkie and are looking at the signage there, both in Rowley Meadows and how it, um, links in or should link in with, um, some of the streets in Arlington Heights. So there'll be more to come on that at a future meeting. That's the report for this month.
Then we move on to the purchase order disclosures over 2500. Ms. Gallagher?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And there are three purchase orders for city council review. Nothing further to note.
Then the final item under the city staff reports is the staff report on the fire station. Mr. Uh, excuse me, Chief Friendsgrove?
Yes, really nothing to add on that. Uh, you know, just, just coming up in June, we're going to be asking for requests for, uh, proposal requests for qualifications to take the next step following that, uh, Plan Nine that we've, uh, talked about, um, back in, uh, 2014, so.
Then that includes all the items that are under city staff reports this evening. Are there matters not on the agenda? Mr. Cannon?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two items. Uh, first of all, I noticed that we removed one of our city monuments entries over near the courthouse. I'm hoping that we're not going to be having that redone until we get some kind of approval on a new design. I thought we came to conclusion the last time we paid for one, that we would not go forward with another one until we came to a conclusion as a group. I've offered my services, I'd be more than happy to help, but no one's asked for my help, so I assume someone's doing work on it, but I hope we don't get a, uh, a purchase order in front of us for $9,000 again. And then the last one I'd like to offer, um, some thoughts, and this is going to sound very negative, but it is what it is. Um, you know, five weeks ago, we had the people in here from Clark Development and a number of us asked us, I thought very politely, very professionally, for them to do something to clean up that property down there. They have done nothing. So, um, I guess as a group, we can try to do, put more pressure on them. I guess from a personal standpoint, if I don't see something happen in the next couple of weeks, I'm going to propose that we force them to either, can we, whether you come back with a condemnation order to cut, to knock down the whole building or to force them to do something. But I, you know, I think we were very nice the way we asked last time, but it's five weeks later. To my knowledge, they haven't even sent out a street sweeper there to clean out the parking lot. Uh, we asked them to clean up the front side. We didn't ask them to spend thousands of dollars, but I mean, it's, we're asking for minimal cost. They're the owners of the property. I think if someone else left their property like that, we would be very unhappy as a, as a, as a city. So I would ask that we put a lot of pressure on them and they better start listening because I think we've been nice all along. Thanks.
I see Mr. Crumstock looking for the microphone. Mr. Crumstock?
I can comment on the second one that, uh, today, we actually met on the site regarding all those kind of issues, the plywood, the broken windows, um, some of the concrete, but we were on site with, um, obviously Clark Street Development and also the people who are maintaining the property, so they have a time.
In light of Mr. Cannon's comments, could you specify who we is, please, and who they were?
Sure. Um, obviously, my, myself, uh, Ms. Danner, um, we had a whole contingent from the fire department, so, um, chief, deputy chief, and our, um, fire marshal was out there. Then on, uh, Clark Street, Fritz Dudo was there and obviously from the management group, um, Dan, uh, Nur, I'm going butcher his name, sorry, uh, Nuterts was actually out there. And we did talk about each of those issues that have been addressed. We've asked them to come back with us. Some of it, they already had some proposals, but they're looking for some additional proposal numbers to get certain things fixed or rectified, but that was from today's meeting too.
So is it possibly, you give us any kind of a timeframe at all?
We actually asked for, um, by, hopefully by the 5th, that they would tell us which proposal they're going to be taking on the windows, what other steps they would actually be doing, but that was the tentative timetable that we talked about, that really by May 5th, we wanted to know what they were doing with their property, specifically with the broken windows, um, the plywood and some of their other items. And then there's obviously some other concerns that we had over there, but again, that was all from a meeting today.
And Mr. Crumstock, could I ask, in light of Mr. Cannon's comments, uh, since May 5th would fall in between this meeting and the next, could you please provide an update as to what that information is in the Friday letter that week instead of, uh, making Mr. Cannon ask, uh, under matters not on the agenda at that meeting?
Yep.
We would appreciate that. Thank you. Mr. Cannon, is that sufficient?
That's great, thank you.
Are there further matters not on the agenda?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Beanboss?
I have a, just a question of clarification if I could ask Fred. On, on that sign that we're talking about, uh, was that a repair or replacement?
Oh, the monument you're talking about?
Monument.
I, I, I believe this is the same one where, uh, one of the fellows who's on our, um, Plan, um, Commission, um, sent a, a picture of the damage that was done to it. I believe we're talking about the same thing here. Mr. Vote, exactly what is the status?
Yes, Mayor. Wilkie Road at the courthouse, uh, that one's been damaged for many years. It's time to pull it out. It is being planned for rehab. I don't know that we've got any other direction but to take it out and leave it out until, if the council wishes to, um, go with some other type of sign, sign design, but, uh, staff has no specific direction at this point, so short of that, we try to take care of our infrastructure.
Mr. Deastis?
On that same topic, I'm not sure that, Mr. Cannon, I, you understood one thing? I think I understood that we were going to repair what needs to be repaired as we investigate further, not that we're just going to drop them and not fix anything. So I just asked for some clarification from staff. I thought the last conversation was, we'll continue to fix them, but we're working towards a new design somewhere.
Well, and we can get input from staff. My specific recollection, correct me if I'm wrong, was that somewhere along the line, up to three different ideas for signage was going to be presented to the council. And so, um, I'm not so sure there were specific comments about what to do in the meantime. There may have been. Can anybody on staff help with this? Or perhaps, could I ask that, instead of sharing all our ignorance on something we're not sure about, maybe, uh, people can go back into the minutes from previous meetings and as part of this week's Friday letter, uh, people can tell us exactly what that says and what the plans are instead of us doing it here in the evening? Is that acceptable? All right, I see nodding heads from the interested parties. Mr. Beanboss?
And if there was any cost associated with it, put it in, please.
Absolutely, absolutely. Are there other matters not on the agenda? Then seeing none, there is a request that we go into closed session this evening to